Good evening and welcome. This is the May twentieth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order four P M. The meeting is being both audio and video recording. I would ask that everyone please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, like a roll call, please. Samantha, could you start us off?
Sure. Samantha Velazquez, secretary. Heather Brown, director of curriculum.
Emily Blair, assistant superintendent.
Antonella Rochella.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Sarah Truleo.
Kate Lyden.
Kate Valenta.
Audrey O'Neil.
Sandrine Alvidor.
Emily Baker.
Full table tonight. This is great. Well, honoring our student reps tonight, so thank you all for being here. Um, and we're actually going to move right into that. Yeah, great.
Right. So we have three student representatives who have been incredible this year. And we want to recognize all three.
Oh. Okay.
Big Sam Green's.
Thank you.
Thank Emily, yours is.
Thank you.
Thank yours.
Thank you.
May I grab one just to show off? And go crazy. Okay, so. It looks like this. And so this is a recognition award presented to Emily Baker. Yours are have your name on it as well. For student rep, E L school committee, May twentieth, twenty twenty four. And it really, although it is pretty, doesn't do justice to the incredible job that all three of you have done all year. So thank you very much. You want to take yours out and just give two of you may? Not have to. I think it would really.
Nice.
Make a nice touch for the meeting if we just had. You're welcome. Thank you.
And we've been so appreciative girls of all your efforts in attending the meetings and your input as a student is certainly valuable. And all three of you have contributed when you when you've been at the meeting. So thank you so much for for your time and efforts and we all wish you the best going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, from there, we'll move on. We have approval of minutes. I'd take a motion, please.
I move to approve the May sixth, twenty twenty four, regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Same by Kate. Discussion. Favorite say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Committee and social media communications. Emily, would you like to start out tonight?
Uh, yeah, we have a lot going on with sports. Um, track just had their Western Mass on Saturday. And the boys four by eight really broke the school record. Sounds really exciting. Um, baseball has their first round of Western Mass tomorrow at Conic. And Track States is on Thursday and Saturday. Um, we also have sophomores math MCAS going on tomorrow and Wednesday. And then last week, we had the panorama survey go out to everybody. So everyone had an opportunity to fill that out at the beginning of B block. So hopefully, everybody participated.
They had a Dunkin' Donuts card.
Yes, for responses.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Sandrine.
Uh, prom was on Friday night, actually. I think it went very well. Nice to see everybody go out. Dress up, celebrate graduating. The last day for seniors will be this Friday, the twenty fourth. It's going to be a half day. So seniors will just come in, sign their yearbooks, and then go home. And actually, the date, same day as prom, the Easton Meadow team of for drones competed at the Northeast Regional in West Virginia, and they got second place.
Ah. They missed prom, but second place.
That's terrific.
That's really good. Well, thank you, Sandrine. Audrey.
Um, so, uh, obviously, we had, uh, the Easton Meadow Art Show, um, that was on May ninth, and that generated a lot of very cool artwork. Um, and then the following day, the E L H S Drama Club had their, um, show, which is kind of, um, a very unique and like good thing to be coming back to Easton Meadow because we haven't had a drama club in a little while. Um, and then upcoming events, um, for the juniors, they have their field trip on June seventh, so that's going to be a fun outing. And then also, um, something the school sponsors is Hobie, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award. Um, and so this year's recipient will go to Bentley University, um, on June seventh as well. And it's a three-day seminar, or June seventh to the ninth. Um, and they essentially learn about what it's like to be a good leader and do a lot of different workshops. That's really cool. And it's a really great thing that the school sponsors. And then upcoming will be the Summer Elementary Academy, which a lot of high schoolers volunteer at. And Mr. Mack has done a great job about advertising it and getting, um, high school volunteers.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. Amy.
Um, I've been able to attend, um, the last, the most, the steering committee meetings. I think there's one more to close out this whole year. Is that correct?
Had it last week.
That was the last one. So the next one will be at the beginning of the semester. But it was a really, I think, successful year with a lot of great, um.
You have some.
That were generated and.
Big policies.
Big policy changes coming and definitely still some collaboration going on throughout the summer. I know, like, the group that I'm in, there was a lot of really productive subgroups, so it was a pretty cool experience this year. And then, um, a couple of weeks ago, like, this might have been mentioned at the last meeting, but I wasn't here. The food services contract was, um, is coming to, you know, fruition and successfully negotiated with that group as well.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Is that coming next meeting?
Um, we're going back and forth on the M O A. And then once the, um, M O A has been finalized, the food services group, similar to Unit A, will ratify first. And then it'll come, hopefully, we can get it for the executive in June, executive session in June.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Kate.
I don't have anything for tonight.
Zero.
Nothing.
Let's go.
Um, I actually attended the art show you were talking about. And I mean, we have a lot of creative kids at our school. And it looked like it took a lot of time to put up all of the art and present it in in the way that it was presented. And I know that I had spoken with, um, Ms. Dixon, the art teacher, and she's really looking forward to the new school because there's areas in that school to, um, show the art. So, but the kids did an amazing job.
They're pretty respectful, I think, right? Um, in terms of it hanging on the walls and not touching it as.
Yeah, I haven't seen, nothing's been broken. Yeah, not the James, but no, people have been very respectful.
And E Leaf has an event tomorrow night, don't they?
Um, superintendent of schools is there here.
Yes, yes, I heard that.
I've been raising money for our schools at Toritos.
After people.
Be there.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Antonella. Okay, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Same of the night, we will move right along. We have, uh, presentation, superintendent's report, athletic department and E L Recreation Department revision on E L P S use of school facilities. That policy. Like to join us at the table, please?
Numbers of our recreation department. Sorry. Um, I'm just. Second, okay. Uh, so in your package, you have a proposal for taking one part of our school news policy, uh, specifically regarding the Sunday, uh, use of buildings. Most specifically, uh, probably the high school, which gets used the most. And I think we'll be discussing, presenting and discussing that.
Um, so I think it's important to know that the high school athletic department and the rec department think they'll agree. We work really closely together. I think we work really well together. Uh, full transparency for the town. Anytime that we're using the turf field, anytime that we're using the large gym at the high school, it's always posted on ArbiterLive.com where you can see the exact hours that the high school is using the turf, the exact hours the rec department is using the turf. And anytime that's available, uh, the rec, I always say yes to the rec department anytime that they want any of that available time. We've been finding the last couple of years that there's been times where there's just not enough turf space, gym space. And it's been a challenge for both departments to schedule our programming with one turf field, the high school gym, and then of course, Burson Park and other gyms in the town. Um, so it's been a challenge the past couple of years, being proactive, knowing what's coming uh, and what has happened the past couple of years with construction starting this summer. We're going to be losing multiple grass fields in the back, which is going to displace some high school teams, which will then potentially move some rec teams around. The fact that Saint Michael's, which we, uh, the rec department has used for basketball in the past, they're no longer using, um, that gym. And they're, they've been using, uh, gym space out of town where they've had to pay a rental fee for that. Um, also the fact that the rec department has used Lennox Fields in Easton Meadow, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And the rec department numbers basically doubling in the past four years have all added to the challenge of turf time and gym time. And we try to work so closely together. We remind each other that we're, um, if the rec department is succeeding, it's going to help the high school in the future. And I know those rec coaches love seeing the high school teams do well. So, uh, knowing all of these challenges with space, the current policy is on Sundays, there's no school use on, uh, any fields or in any buildings until one P M. On Sundays. So there's two different requests that you're going to hear today. One of those requests is going to be from the high school athletic department. The other request is going to come from the rec department. So the first request coming from the high school athletic department is, uh, on Sundays, I've never had any coach ever say to me, I want to play Sunday morning games. So it's never an issue about games. We we don't want to play games on Sunday mornings. Um, we really don't want to play games on Sundays, period. But we do want to prepare for those Monday games on Sundays, especially at the varsity level. So knowing that a lot of our, uh, teams, specifically varsity teams, have Monday games. Uh, we want to find more time for them to practice on Sundays, which would then allow the rec department to have more time for games and for practices on Sundays. So the request from the high school is to allow, uh, for high school practices to start on Sunday mornings, potentially as early as seven A M. Um, the coaches would talk to their players. They would talk about their availability. Chances are, it would change from sport to sport, year to year, based on the coach's availability, the player's availability. And with all high school sports, uh, players are never, there's never any consequences any day of the week if they ever have to miss practice for, uh, miscellaneous family commitments or religious reasons, as long as they communicate those to the coach in advance. So any day of the week, those are always fully excused. Um, but I know our coaches are always trying to choose times that will try to get as many players there as possible, whether it's, uh, C C D or confirmation classes or, um, different commitments that different players have on their teams. They're always trying to choose the times that work the best for their program. So that's the request from the high school. Athletic department is to allow for practices on Sunday mornings, uh, if the coaches, uh, and the players wanted to practice at that time. The separate request would come from the rec department, which is a little bit different. So I'll let the rec department take over with that request.
Yeah, sure. Um, thanks. We're just trying to get as many kiddos and programs as we can. And and, um, the field situation is getting tighter and the fields that we do have, you know, are just overused. Um, during COVID, we tried to rest Burchland, but where the kids, you know, that's the only thing they could do is go outside. So we put up fencing and tried to protect some areas. And but the point is, is just that we have a lot of kiddos in town that want to play sports. So that's, that's what all we're trying to do. And I don't like turning kids away. But, um, I also explained to some parents this last basketball season, I can't take your money if I can't provide a product. And if I can't, I can't have thirteen, fourteen kids on a team. Um, they'd never get to play. And when it did came, come to gym time, I'm, I mean, game time. And then the coaches are, rec teams get one practice a week, travel teams get two practices a week. And I have, oh, why can't rec teams get two practices a week? And there's just, there's just so many days in the week and so many hours in the day. So that's just one block of time that we're looking at. Uh, we, we do struggle because some of the schools have cap and we can't get into those schools right, those the couple of those schools and right after school. So then we have the littles, and I say littles like first.
K through two.
Yeah, you know, these kids can't get in till five thirty into a gym. And then that just push, you know, pushes them later at, on a school night to be out. So we're just trying to look at options to serve everyone. And yes, we didn't, we didn't use Trinity, uh, for practices and games, uh, the Trinity Church. And we also used First Baptist, um, for practices last year.
And those you rented, Donna.
Yes.
It's kind of a separate topic, though, though, since we're on a Kevin. Anything on, uh, tennis in terms of, uh, availability of courts during our?
So we've been working on, uh, different financial quotes from indoor tennis options to tennis courts. We're getting, um, quotes for transportation, for transporting kids there. Uh, we're in that phase of figuring out what it would look like budget-wise. Uh, and I also think one of the things that we're really looking at is, you know, if a tennis program has twenty-four kids and they're using six courts, it would make a lot of sense to hire two tennis coaches instead of one tennis coach. Have double sessions, one session of twelve kids on three courts. Next session of the, another twelve kids on three courts after that. Um, it's the same amount of court use where they could stay on site. And we could potentially hire a second coach. So that's something that we're looking at also. But we're also looking at potential of indoor courts early in the season when it's cold. Um, and also when it gets nicer, uh, using some local courts. So we're, we're putting all the financial parts together to see what that looks like financially.
And then will we look through other towns for outside field usage through the construction? Are we starting to explore that? Or just, would we just, in terms of leagues, ask for more away games? How are we looking at that?
Field-wise, with games, I think we're going to be in good shape in the town of Easton Meadow. But we're going to have some programs practicing, potentially at Burson Park, potentially at Maple Shade. Those are all things where there are going to be some teams that move off-site to other Easton Meadow schools, which will then impact the rec department and the programming that would be there. So we've had meetings together, looking at those different options, football program, with field hockey, with soccer, what that looks like. Um, but I'm confident that all of our field sports we can do in the town of Easton Meadow by working together with the rec department. But again, it's gonna, by doing that, it's going to potentially move some teams off of their regular spaces. And a great way to, to mediate that is to say, hey, we can get you lots of turf games this year because we have more turf availability. And now we have five, maybe six more hours that the rec department can use the turf. Those teams are playing on the turf when they would normally be playing games on the grass. So it's looking at that potential, um, where the rec programs will hopefully, if if the school committee approves it, we'll see more games on the turf on the weekend.
And we, there, uh, we're, we are in communication with the Hamden, um, uh, rec director and got some field space. So he's been taking a couple of our teams a little bit more than he would to try to free up some space. I've looked into Springfield schools. Uh, they are outrageously expensive to, that space, both indoors and out. That's why I've been looking at, at churches primarily. They tend to be a little bit cheaper. And we've also, uh, looked at, the First Baptist has a piece of property in the back. We've looked at those fields, but even for practice, they're not viable because they're just not smooth enough.
Currently, Saturday, uh, operating times are at seven A M. Do we start?
We start practices as early as seven on Saturdays. A lot of the time, the reason why we would start at seven is, uh, the players could potentially be requesting that because they have work obligations. Uh, it also may be, um, a coach's request. I know we, we try to start at eight A M., but there are times that we start at seven A M., usually because of availability and the fact that some players want to start a little bit earlier. But typically, it's an eight A M. Start.
The reason I asked is neighbors, uh, abutting the fields in terms of Sunday morning at seven o'clock and having teams, you know, right outside their window. Um, I suppose if they're just not current complaints on Saturday, then it wouldn't be a big deal. On Sunday, I've been hesitant to change this. Obviously, I'm struggling with you about it, but I can see the need is there. So maybe it is the time. Any of our students have any thoughts on this? So currently, you understand currently we don't allow anything till one o'clock on Sunday?
Yeah.
But they're asking to open it up. What do you, any thoughts on it?
Um, I think as long as the coaches do communicate with the players and they don't get penalized for any, uh, outside commitments or maybe religious reasons, I don't think it's really that big of a problem because they're already getting like, like, they deal with the same thing on Saturday. It is just another weekend day. Um, obviously, coaches do need to give players some time because as much as high school sports are important, they definitely need to make sure they're giving players some sort of break. But, um, as a team that does have Monday meets all the time, it is very important maybe to have like a meeting on Sunday to like, even if it is just a meeting to like recollect, because often it's like advise that we run on Sunday or like coaches may tell their players like do this on Sunday, but you can't really control it. And it does affect performance, I think.
I think even if people don't use it as much, I think having the option there is like really nice because I know like, I mean, like from like my sport and like my coaches, there's definitely been times where like a Sunday practice was definitely necessary. But there's nothing that we can like technically do until after one, especially with like running, like you need the cool air in the morning before it gets like a mess afterwards. So I think as long as coaches, unlike what Audrey was saying, as long as coaches understand that there are other commitments, especially like regarding like religious affiliations on Sundays, as long as that's talked through and worked through, I feel like having the option there would be like, really like sound for coaches.
Any thoughts from the committee? How you feeling?
I think we're going to be in a bind once those fields are gone.
So I don't know if we have other options.
Yeah, we're practicing late at night.
Right.
I forgot about the after-school programs. That's a huge impact.
Okay, I take a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I know.
Modify the policy.
Exactly. So I move to modify the E L H S Athletic Department and E L Recreation Department. Revision on E L P S use of school facilities to start, is that what you want? Just.
Uh, because you can do the file number two, file number K F.
File K F dash R to allow the use of athletic fields and court gyms starting at seven A M. On Sundays.
Yep, perfect. Good, yeah. Yeah, that works for me.
As presented.
Yep. Even better. Cover all bases. Motion made by Kate.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you much for your.
Two, yeah. Appreciate it. Oh, yeah. Okay, we have a request for girls cross-country for an eighth grade waiver, Mr. McGee.
So this waiver would be just if needed. Um, Coach Bud is anticipating approximately seven returning now cross-country runners. The M I A A recommended number to ask for a waiver is if you're ten or below. So we're anticipating ten or less. Of course, if the signups were to be eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, nine through twelfth graders, if we were to go over ten, then we would withdraw that waiver and not use it. This is just if we would need to use it, uh, with ten or below cross-country runners.
We had to use this in the past.
We have not used a cross-country one in the past couple of years.
Pretty close.
Yeah, I know Coach Bud, that this is the most likely the year that he's going to need it.
Me and Emily have spent the past few years recruiting anyone we saw. I think we recruited a total of like six people at this point.
But the cross-country team definitely gets very scarce, especially with the girls. Like, I think we've hit ten, like, just the past few years.
All right, so. Um, I move to accept or approve.
Yeah, sure. Proves good.
All right. The E L H S eighth grade waiver for girls cross-country if needed.
Motion made by Antonella.
Again.
Second by Kate. Any other discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And the, uh, softball, uh, Western Mass quarterfinal game.
Oh. Burchland, right?
Yeah, Burchland versus, uh, Lutbo.
Lutbo.
Yeah.
We have our assistant superintendent for business report. It's an F Y twenty twenty-three end-of-year audit.
That's right. So in your packet, um, I've given you the end-of-year report, which is larger documents. In the month of September, every business manager across the state of Massachusetts is working on their end-of-year financial report for, for the school department. This is a pretty large report. Um, it's also pretty important, which is why I thought it was important that you all have a copy of it. Uh, this is broken down. You always hear me talk about D O E codes. I love my D O E codes. Everything is classified accordingly. Um, and these are driven by the State of Massachusetts, Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. So it's, the report is broken down by D O E codes and then further broken down if it is an instructional expenditure or revenue by occasion. Um, it's also, it is the, um, expenditures and revenues from the general fund by both the school and the town. So any expenditures that the town has, as well as grants for the school and the town, if they are for the school, and, um, revolving accounts as well. Uh, I do want you to know that there's over six hundred accounts that the school department has. So, you know, like, it's, it's pretty significant, I guess. It's just what I want you all to know. So after the, uh, fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, I, you know, we, we close everything out over the summer and then the month of September, I'm running those reports and doing the end-of-year report. And then sometime, usually about six months later, the auditors come in and that's, that's this report here. So I always need to, um, work with the auditor. And anytime that our report, school department financial, or it doesn't match the town's financial report, then they need to put it into a finding here so that it's, it's very transparent. Because things that are reported can affect, um, you know, revenues that come back to the district. So I try really hard and I work really hard on this report. I think I always tell you that and you all see me working in the month of September. But there's always findings. There's, there's little things. Um, but it's most important, if you go to page four and you just start looking at the different findings, there are ten different items here. There are things, um, that I want you to see is at the end of each one where it says management response under each one, you will see that every single one says the school department submitted an amendment with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And it gives the date there. So this end-of-year report that I did give you includes any of those, um, errors that I rectified in, in the report. Um, the, the items here are things like, uh, capital projects on the town side that I missed for whatever reason. I'm working with, um, Kim Collins and trying to, we are going to come up with a better system. Because as I said, I'm reporting our expenditures, but then also I get information from them. I just think that there's a better way that we can go about that. So she's going to work with me on that. Um, small example, the crossing guards, I didn't pick up the Medicaid for it. So it's little things like that, um, ARPA grant on the town side that I wasn't aware of, um, that needed to be reported. Um, prior year encumference that was off by three thousand nine hundred nine dollars. None of these are, are huge items. Um, one item, I had the wrong, uh, D O E code that was reported. So, you know, their job as an auditor is to come in and make sure that everything is reported appropriately. So I bring this forward to the school committee to, um, accept from the prior year. And again, this is last year's end-of-year report.
Anything for Pam? Thank you, Pam, for keeping track of all the numbers.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I know it's a lot, so. Um, I would change a motion to accept.
I move to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-three end-of-year audit report as presented.
Made by Sarah.
Okay.
Second by Amy. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. That carries five.
Great, thank you.
Hey, for the director of curriculum and assessment, we have the adoption of E L H S, uh, a new curriculum.
Yes, so, um, high school English department is up for curriculum renewal and they went through the process recommended by Desi and she launched adult education, high school literacy program, um, which is painted all green on ed reports. And just as a side note, there has been some controversy around ed reports because they have given some basals all green. And so some of the folks who are really concerned about knowledge building curriculum have pointed that out. Um, thankfully, this is a, uh, knowledge building curriculum. Uh, it is not a basal. It's actually modular and there's a, a good amount of choice for teachers and for students. Um, but it's all around, uh, grade level rigorous text and the students, the idea being that students are getting all the skills that they need, um, especially those critical thinking skills they'll need for post-high. Skills that they need, um, especially those critical thinking skills they'll need for post-high success. Um, just to give you an idea, some of the texts, they have classics like Romeo and Juliet in nineteen eighty four and then a lot of contemporary titles. Um, it really aligns well with the, the shifts of the common core in terms of using tech sets to build background knowledge. Um, and, um, you know, a lot more emphasis on research skills and writing. Um, so, um, in, in addition to the. Curriculum, obviously to implement a new curriculum, it's a heavy lift. There's some shifts in teaching. Um, so we've contracted with the New Teacher Center, which is one of the, uh, two, uh. Recommended or actually Odell approved professional development providers. And as you can see, if you go through, um, I've given you the whole packet, but basically it's, it's pretty comprehensive. There's systems level consultation. Uh, there'll be some one-on-one coaching with teachers. We've already had a, a, a leadership meeting and a launch with all of the English teachers last week. Um, and then there's, uh, additional leadership training, some walkthroughs and helping them, um, with what to look for and things like that. So. Um, I'm really excited about this because it's not a one and done kind of professional development. And they're feeling much better about knowing that they're going to have a lot of support, considering the fact that we don't. Have instructional coaches at the high school. And so this will really help with that, um, transition and implementation of the new, um, materials.
Do they have, um, common assessments in this?
Yes. Um, and so one of the things that they're doing right now, we set up the leadership team. It's made up of, the department had a teacher. Um, and the principals and assistant principals and myself, some parameters around which modules are choosing to make sure that. Students are getting exposed to different genres, diff, um, different kinds of texts, the canon texts, the contemporary texts. Um, and so when they choose those modules, they have to choose the same thing. So all of the ninth grade. Kids will be getting the same thing. So they'll all have those common assessments as well.
And this is just for high school, not middle school?
The middle school is beginning their, um. Journey into choosing, uh, selecting high quality instructional materials next year.
Oh.
So they are aware of that and they are going to, it's kind of started the process a little bit early and they're going to be going into that process next year. Um, while there'll be different curricular materials, we have wit and wisdom, for example, as a knowledge building curriculum in the elementary. Uh, the, uh, height, the six to eight. Have their parameters are only knowledge building curriculums. So those high quality ones. And so, and then Odell. So that we can, after we've implemented, kind of tweak some of the routines and language. But in terms of the rigor and the expectations, that transition will be really nice. I let them know that we have Socratic seminars as early as kindergarten with wit and wisdom. So they will have very well-prepared students coming to them.
Do we know any other districts that are using this curriculum?
No, and I was really excited because I particularly, uh, thought this one was, uh. Really high quality for a lot of reasons. So I was surprised, but then when you do the research, even curate doesn't have anything out there for high school. High school English, I think are going to be the later adopters. So we're kind of on the cutting edge. Um, so there's a district in Rhode Island and I know Randolph Public Schools are, are using Odell. If you look on the curriculum database for high schools. You'll see, uh, for ELA, a lot of teacher developed, teacher developed, they're, they're, they're a little slower to that. So. Kind of on the forefront, which is exciting, but also, you know, we don't necessarily have other districts to lean on, but, um. Part of what they're doing is helping us network with those folks, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adopt the curriculum, please. Thank you, motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Kate. Other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Thank you for that, Heather. And you have one more grant?
Yes, so this is, um, a grant that we didn't actually apply for, but Springfield Public Schools applied for its, um. A competitive grant program that the Springfield Public Schools got. And it's really about creating partnerships with, in districts and also with higher ed so that we're really making sure that the educators that we're getting. Are, are prepared to teach, uh, literacy in the way that has been proven to be most effective. Um, so it's an exciting partnership. I've been in meetings with, uh, Laura Mendez. Her official title is Director of English Language Arts Literacy, um, and different. Uh, heads from the local colleges. So it's going to be an opportunity to network around that, but also with our recruitment. Some of the things that we're trying to do around recruitment and, um, Ms. Delento talked about in the Equity Diversity Committee. That's one of the things that we're working on. So, um, it builds off the work of other, um. Of what Springfield Public Schools has already established. Um, they're the lead district on the grant. Um, and we will be hiring five students. And I know now that there will be one from El, a couple from Elms, one from AIC and one from West, uh, Westfield State University. That will, in addition to the teachers that we hire, will be working, um, in the Summer Literacy Academy. Um, in a variety of roles, some of them will have their own small groups, some will be co-teaching. And we have a coach who will, who will work with them as well. Um, and so they'll get to, um. Interact with our students and get the experience working with high quality instructional materials. Um, so it's, it's an exciting collaboration and, uh, yeah. I'm excited to be part of it.
Cool.
More informative.
Uh, do we?
We did not apply for the grant that's we're, we're being, we're kind of been asked.
So she accepted. Is there, are we, are we receiving funds? Yeah. So I'd take a motion to accept the grant.
Do you accept the Summer Learning Consortium Grant? As presented.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Thank you, Heather. Okay, moving right along. Formation of an ELPS AI Committee. Do you have more information about this?
Basically, the.
Yeah.
The idea behind the committee is, uh, if we can get it up and running, uh, with hopefully. At least, uh, one representative, maybe two from the school committee. But, um, also with the help of our town IT director, Ryan Quimby. And then at least one representative from each of the schools. What we'd like to do is take a look at. How we're currently using some of the AI products and software that, um, we know have already started to come into schools. Um, get a better understanding as to maybe how as a district we can. Determine what is the best use of new products as they come online and how should we, um, look if we're purchasing. To determine, you know, when and, um, how we purchase these things. Also, to start to. Put forth just a vision for how to use this in a way that's productive for both the district and for student learning. So that we don't get into the trap, which I think people are already getting into and we're probably seeing some of that here in ELPS. Where you, you're sort of punishing your way out of it. Someone used it, they didn't think about, you know, nor were the consequences communicated. Uh, and so then they failed the assignment because they used AI in terms of finishing that assignment. That's not necessarily the most productive way to go about entering into the use of, um, artificial intelligence. To, to the extent we can, we'd like to. Move forward and start to put some of these things in place so we don't go down that road too far.
And you were thinking we may need a stipend for at least the.
We could use the committee rate. If, uh, the new contract, um. Uh, passes, then we'll use that committee rate. We'll advertise the committee rate, you know. Basically to earn the committee rate, you have to meet ten times, I don't, or, or have ten hours of work. I think this committee is gonna. Have or qualify for probably ten or more hours of work and. Great. So they would get that, that rate, yeah.
And when do we think they might start up? Next school year?
Yeah, possible. We could start it right in September.
Yeah, okay. Great. Any other question? Audrey, what do you think? AI coming to schools?
Um, honestly, I think it's good. You have a committee because personally. I don't really use AI because I know it can, it sounds funky and I don't really like the idea of it, but. I don't know, I think it has positive benefit. Like I mentioned this earlier when we first discussed this committee, like. I think it might have been our first meeting because I swear we were all here together. Um. I've used AI like in classes in which like you write answers to an FRQ and then it grades you based on the college board rubric. So that was definitely very helpful because you got instantaneous results. The teacher didn't have to waste time and it's a quick activator. Uh, but then I also think using AI like. I've used like the Quizlet AI, like in classes, just going back and forth with it is kind of very monotonous and boring. So you kind of have to find the right ways to do it and obviously learn how to like. Definitely encourage maybe just to use it to structure your essays if you realize that it's going to be used, not. Allow students to use it entirely. So it's gonna be a tricky thing to balance and recognize, but, um. I think it's good that there's gonna be a committee for it so we can stay on top of it.
Well said. Thank you, Audrey. It's too bad you're not gonna be around to be on it.
I honestly.
Have a good perspective.
I think you definitely gotta get some students on it because they, they definitely know more about it than me, like.
You're a student still.
I know, but I, I don't mess with AI. Kind of like, I don't know, I don't do it.
Anyone else?
Sandra, you know? Anybody else on the subject? Sarah's gonna be volunteering, I can tell.
No. Sorry, this is for you, Greg. Um, so what are, are we approving the formation of a new committee?
Correct.
And we would have to advertise and get, um, the school personnel.
And then we would.
And advertise for students too. So if you, you know, depending on how many, um. Students you'd like on it. We can put that together as well.
And then we would. Pick who's on it when we do a rework.
Sure.
Alright, I move to approve the creation of an ELPS AI Artificial Intelligence Committee. To become, do I need to say who it's gonna be comprised of or no?
No, I mean, if, um, if we go with, uh, at least one staff member from each building. And I mean, if you want to give a recommendation for how many students you feel should be on it, we can certainly do that as well.
It's okay.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. We can check with Frank and maybe the committee can meet once and think about it themselves even.
Okay.
Alright, for the twenty, to start in the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
Okay, motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And finally, we have our annual request for National Night Out for August sixth, twenty twenty-four, from five to eight PM. We would, uh, Mr. Mackey, you would probably need the fields a little bit earlier for prep. Be accurate.
Yeah, I, generally, I'm up there.
So for the day of Tuesday, August sixth. At least nine PM probably.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, I take a motion for approval of that, please.
I move to accept the request for. For the baseball field parking lot and the National Night Out on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. All day.
Excellent, motion made.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Well. With that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting. Again, Sandrine, uh, Emily and, uh, Audrey. Thank you so very much. We wish you the best. We will see you out in the field for graduation. We're gonna go, right? May, I might, I maybe I'll give you your diploma too. Okay, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn, please. Motion made by Antonella. Nobody wants to. Second by Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay, that carries five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.